Can you hear me now? Okay, frightening Phyllis, you might have to be at the ready.
We are now ready to proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon. This is Rod Shagis Parkland County Mayor and I'll call the meeting order at two oh one P M for March twenty third, twenty twenty one, and the meeting is now in session. Due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, we will be conducting this meeting using the law electronic communication under Parkland County's meeting procedure by law two zero one five dash zero six and section one nine nine municipal government act. And we'll have the record show that all members of council are present for this meeting. And to ensure we have procedural fairness for this meeting, I will outline the procedures. So for each agenda item, I'll ask the chief administrative officer to introduce the matter. I'll then get a member of council to bring forward the motion. And then I'll open up the floor for comment by members of council. And we'll allow all members of council to continue in the discussion until there's no for no further comments to be made. I will then ask members of council to raise their hand to show whether they're in favor of the motion. And then I'll declare the motion either failed or carried. And so I will ask at this time for councillor Jensen to lead us in inspirational reflection.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. During our council meeting today, may we be mindful in our discussions and considerations that we determine the appropriate course of action. May we be surrounded with the insight we need to do our best for the benefit of our county and its people.
Thank you, councillor Jensen. So on today's agenda are the following items. We have under four point one, the adoption of the March nineteenth, twenty twenty one council meeting minutes. At two fifteen under agenda item five point one, we have public input. Item B one is support for national three digit crisis line initiative. Item C one is the twenty twenty one assessment review board appointments. Item C point two is by law two zero two one dash zero six repeal of Wobman bylaws. Item C point three is by law two zero two one dash zero seven, which is the redistricting of the northeast, partial southwest, thirty four fifty two twenty six west to the fourth, and that's amendment to land use by law two zero one seven dash one eight and the proposed conceptual scheme for Atchison Zone Six. Item E one is municipal operating support transfer grant. Item E point two is the twenty twenty project funding amendments. Item eight point one, it's the rural municipalities Alberta contact newsletter. Item eight point two is Federation of Canadian municipalities update. Item eight point three is committed reports. And then we have closed session under nine point one, and there's three items under there. One is nine point two tax forfeiture property number one. Item nine point three is tax forfeiture property number two. Item nine point four is collaborative economic development, and then item nine point five is capital projects discussion. So at least we'll ask members of council if there's any additions or deletions that they have to today's agenda, and I'll start with division one councillor Jensen.
No additions to deletions, thank you.
Division three councillor Kabasiak.
No additions or deletions, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Division four councillor Hollins.
No additions or deletions. Thank you.
Division five councillor McNabb.
No additions, deletions for me. Thank you.
And division six councilor Melnick.
No additions or deletions from myself. Thank you.
And Ms. Swain, any additions or deletions from administration today?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No additions or deletions from administration today.
Thank you. Can I get a motion from a member of council to adopt the agenda as presented, please?
Mr. Chair, councillor Kabasiak, I'll move the as presented.
Thank you. And can I'll ask all members of council to raise their hand if they're in favor of the agenda as presented. And we'll let the records indicate that all members of council are in support of that. And on today's consent consent agenda are items four point one, which is the adoption of the February twenty third, twenty twenty one council meeting minutes. Item C point one, which is the twenty twenty one assessment review board appointments. Item E two is the twenty twenty project funding amendments. Item eight point one, rural municipalities Alberta contact newsletter and item eight point two, Canadian Federation of Municipality update. Are there any additions or deletions to the consent agenda from members of council? And I'm not seeing any. Can I get a mover for that motion, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the consent agenda be adopted as presented.
Thank you, councillor Hollins, and I'd ask members of council to raise their hand if they are in support of that motion. And we'll let the records reflect that all members of council are in favor of the consent agenda. So we'll now begin with our agenda and Ms. Swain will move to item E one under chief financial officer, please.
Thank you. So today I have Jeff Dyke, Chief Financial Officer, who has joined us to present the municipal operating support transfer grant and is prepared to answer any questions the council may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Swain, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Many municipalities have experienced significant financial impacts due to the COVID nineteen pandemic. The government of Alberta and the government of Canada are providing operating funding support to municipalities to the municipal operating support transfer grant. This funding is provided as part of the safe restart agreement. This program will support municipalities by funding incremental costs and reduced revenues associated with the pandemic and actions in response to it. The county received just over three million dollars in total funds, of which a portion was realized in the twenty twenty fiscal year. Administration is requesting that the remaining funds be allocated in the following manner. One hundred thousand dollars to accommodate remote work initiatives and staff requirements and four hundred and forty thousand dollars to upgrade information technology in support of the county's operations during the pandemic. Any funds not required for the items above will be reallocated within the purposes and conditions of the grant agreement. Without the proposed motion is before you for your consideration.
Thank you very much. And can I get a mover for that motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, it's councillor John McNabb, division five. I'll make the motion that council approve and utilize up to five hundred and forty thousand of the municipal operating support transfer most grant in twenty twenty one as presented.
Thank you, councillor McNabb. And if there's any members of council who'd like to speak to this, I'd ask you raise your hand. And there are no members of council that have any questions or comment at this time. So I will ask members of council if they are in support of this motion, and I'll start with councillor Kabasiak. My apologies, if you could just raise your hand to indicate if you're in support of the motion. And we'll let the records reflect that all members of council do support this motion. Thank you very much. Ms. Swain will move to item B on the agenda under chief administrative officer, B one, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This past year has been challenging. Lives and livelihoods have been lost. COVID nineteen through isolation has had devastating effects on the mental health of Canadians. The federal government has passed a motion to bring in a national three digit suicide and crisis prevention hotline, nine eight eight. The ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic has increased the demand for suicide prevention services by up to two hundred percent. Percent existing crisis hotlines require the user to remember a ten digit number, go through local directories, or even be placed on hold. It is a significant and important initiative to ensure barriers are removed to those in crisis and seeking help. Given that the alarming rate of suicide in Canada constitutes a national health crisis, the government in collaboration with the provinces seeks to support the establishment of a national three digit hotline that is accessible to all Canadians. On March fifteenth, municipalities within the Sturgeon River Parkland riding received a letter of request from M P Dane Lloyd requesting for a nation three digit crisis line. So the motion before you for consideration is that council approve the endorsement of a national three digit crisis line initiative and that administration be directed to send a letter to our local Member of Parliament, the Federal Minister of Health, the Canadian Radio Television and Telecommunications Commission, C R T C, and local area municipalities, indicating that Parkland County supports a national three digit crisis hotline initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. If I can get a member of council to bring forward that motion.
It's councillor Melnick, division six. I'll put forward the motion that council approved and the endorsement of a national three digit crisis line initiative.
Thank you, councillor Melnick. And any questions or comments from members of council on this? Councillor Kabasiak.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I certainly support this motion and it's a it's a sad state of affairs with issues coming out of our pandemic that we see a lot of mental health issues and that need to be addressed. And the stigma around these issues is, you know, certainly one that needs care and helps. I certainly support the initiative and compliment M P for ensuring that there's a continuity and that municipalities are looking at this three digit national crisis line.
Any additional comments? I do want to thank our Member of Parliament Dane Lloyd for providing us this letter and having this brought forward for council resolution and support. It is an important initiative and hopefully a simple three digit number will help avoid and avert some of the traumatic events that individuals who are suffering from mental health issues will face. So if there's no further comments on this, I would ask members of council to please raise their hand if they're in support of this motion. And we'll let the records reflect that all members of council do support the motion. There's a second motion attached with this item. If I can get a mover for that, please.
Sure, Mr. Mayor, councillor Emily Sajanson, division one, and I'll make the motion that administration be directed to send a letter to our local Member of Parliament, the Federal Minister of Health, the Canadian Radio Television and Telecommunications Commission, C R T C, and local area municipalities indicating Parkland County support for a national three digit crisis hotline initiative.
Thank you, councillor Jensen. Any comments on this item or questions? I do not see any. Once again, we'll ask members of council to raise their hand if they're in support of this motion. And all members of council do support that. So with that, we will move to item four point one, pardon me, under five point one, under today's agenda, which is delegations and this is a standing item. So at two fifteen, we do have an opportunity for members of the public to address council. So I do, I just want to advise that we will, council will not be engaging in dialogue, but if there are any specific questions that members of the public have, our staff will get the contact information. So I will ask that any member of the public who wants to address council be allowed into the meeting room at this time, please. And I do see we have one member of council that has called in, so I will ask that individual to please identify themselves and then you can begin with your presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Heinz.
Hello, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Sorry about that. I'm trying to start my video, but I don't seem to have control of that. I hello to everybody present and thank you for allowing me to join your meeting. I assume that everyone is aware of the proposed one hundred and fifty foot Wi Fi tower to be built in the Rolling Hills subdivision.
We did receive your letter, Mr. Heinz. It was circulated to all members of council, and we have had an opportunity to to review it and read it. Thank you.
Okay. Sorry, I tried to start my video again here. It's not connecting, so I will ignore that. I have, as you see, submitted that petition which has ninety five percent of the landowners, which is twenty six of the twenty eight lots that are objecting to the installation of this tower in our residential subdivision. The remaining five percent or two lots, I was not able to be to contact them to confirm their position. We feel that there's no doubt on the negative impact of the property values of all the lots within this subdivision if this tower is to take place. There is concern about possible long term health consequences from exposure to E M F radio frequencies, et cetera, and the cancer risks associated with such towers. Whether those risks are founded or not, they raise the question with a lot of the general population and therefore adversely affect property value simply because of their presence. Any properties I have personally purchased in the past, I've not even considered any near cell towers or major power lines. This tower would be an eyesore in a very pristine heavily treated subdivision. The uniqueness of Rolling Hills is not replicated throughout the region. And I know that because I looked for this property a long time before I purchased it many years ago. This reserve green area that is proposed to put the tower on is home to moose, deer, bird populations to clear trees for the tower and erect such an industrial commercial structure will impact the current solitude of this reserve area and the subdivision as a whole. This tower will literally look down into the adjacent properties to the site, including mine. It'll transform the setting from a tranquil bush setting to staring up at a tower high above the trees. And I ask anybody involved in this approval process if they would accept that overlooking their backyard because that's what'll take place with this. The residents are looking for an official response from Parkland County or elected officials with confirmation that the proposed building of this tower within the subdivision borders will not be approved. So we are looking for a response from Parkland County on that and are interested to know when we will expect that we can have that. That pretty much sums up our points and the perspective of the residences within this subdivision. So one of the questions I have is who does the final approval on this tower? I would assume Parkland County has a lot to do with that.
So, Mr. Heinz, as I stated on the outset, it's really not a platform where we do engage in discussion, but it will advise you that and I see that one of the parties that you did send your letter to is Innovation Science Economic Development, the federal government. So it is the federal government that has jurisdiction over the sighting of towers and provides approvals. There is a requirement for them to consult with municipalities. But effectively municipalities do not have any power or authority to stop any of those internet towers from being erected. So that in a nutshell is is the legislation that we and all municipalities across Canada operate under. But we, I will commit that administration will get a response back to more detailed response on on the approval process in our part. Councillor Kabasiak.
Mr. Chair, I just, I know we're not entering into debate or comments. I just want to thank Mr. Hens. He did call me and asked several questions that he's asked you today, and I just want to say thank you for contacting me and also for contacting your neighbors and getting their their opinion. And Parkland County certainly has the opportunity to pass that petition on as we see fit. So just thank you to Mr. Hens for his time.
Good, and I appreciate you allowing me to join your meeting and for everybody's time there.
Thanks, Mr. Hens, and have a great day.
Yep, thank you. Bye bye.
So we will move back to our agenda and we'll proceed to legislative matters under item C two, Ms. Swain.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So as part of the process to integrate the hamlet of Woben into Parkland County, I would like to invite Josh Culling, Business Development Officer and Woben Integration Project Lead and Avery Dawes Municipal Projects Co-op Student to present by law twenty twenty one dash zero six, which is the repeal of Woben bylaws. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Swain. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. As a result of order in council number three eight six twenty twenty, the village of Woben dissolved into Parkland County, becoming a hamlet of the county as of January first, twenty twenty one. The hundred and eighteen bylaws of the former village continue to apply until they are repealed, amended, or replaced by Parkland County's council. Over the coming weeks and months, bylaws will be brought forward to council in several sets and organized into themes. Today, by law, twenty twenty one oh six represents the repeal of thirty two of the former villages bylaws organized into three themes. Council and committees, provincial matters, and taxation. Each of these themes has an accompanying schedule attached that provides a brief rationale for administration's recommendation as well as a copy of the bylaws in question. Following from a thorough review by the project team and respective departments, administration recommends the repeal of these thirty two bylaws through the passing of by law twenty twenty one oh six. Administration is ready to respond to any questions related to by law twenty twenty one oh six. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cullen, and we do have five motions for council's consideration. If I can get a mover for the first motion, please.
Mr. Chair, councillor Kabasiak, I moved by law twenty twenty one zero six receive first reading.
Thank you, and I'll open it up to comments or questions from members of council. If there are any comments, I'd ask you raise your hand. I do have one question for administration. So at the time of dissolution, as mentioned, that there were a hundred and eighteen bylaws within the village of Woben. So today we're considering repealing thirty two of those bylaws. So when do we anticipate the remaining eighty six will be coming forward for review and recommended action?
Through the chair and to Mayor Shagis, we'll be bringing each of the remaining bylaws to council in batches over the next several weeks. So we will be here for sure for the next three weeks or the next three council sessions with selections of bylaws ranging in complexity and trying to keep each date as organized as we can so that they can be as well considered as we can allow for. The plan is to have all of the bylaws addressed by the summer of twenty twenty one, saving for a few bylaws that will remain outstanding, such as related to land use planning.
Thank you. I'll just ask one more time if there's any questions at first reading. See none. If you can raise your hand if you're in favor of the motion. And all six members of council support that. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that by law twenty twenty one dash zero six receive second reading.
Thank you, councillor Hollins. Comments, questions at second reading? I am not seeing any. Again, please raise your hand if you're in support of a motion for second reading. And all members of council are in support of that. That's so that is carried. If I can get a mover for the third motion, please.
Mr. Mayor, John McNabb, councillor, that by law twenty twenty one dash zero six be presented at this meeting for third reading.
Thank you, those in favor. Please raise your hand. And that is supported by all members of council. Get a mover for the fourth motion.
Councillor Tracy Melnick, division six, I'll put forward the motion that by law twenty twenty one dash zero six, we see third and final reading.
Thank you. And final opportunity for for comment by members of council. And don't see any. Please raise your hand if you're in support of the motion. And all six members of council are supportive of that. And if I can get a motion for the motion number five, please.
Mr. Mayor, councillor Emily Sajanson, division one, I'll move that council approve authorization of electronic signature for by law twenty twenty one dash zero six in accordance with section two thirteen of the municipal government act.
Thank you. And please indicate if you're in support of the motion. And once again, all six members of council are in support of that. Thank you to administration, not just for bringing this item forward, but for all the work that's been undertaken thus far to transition Woben into Parkland County as a hamlet. And we council recognizes has been a lot of time and effort, and we appreciate the work that's been undertaken thus far. Ms. Swain, if we can move to item C three, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'd like to invite Ms. Karen Oxley, current planner, along with support from Stephen Beggar, Nikki, manager of current planning, to provide counsel with an overview of by law twenty twenty one dash zero seven redistricting northeast and point southwest thirty four fifty two twenty six W four M amendment to land use by law twenty seventeen dash eighteen and proposed And proposed conceptual scheme for section thirty four fifty two twenty six. W four M within Atchison Zone Six. Sorry, I just lost my place. Um. And they are prepared to answer any questions council may have. Thank you, Ms. Oxley.
Thank you, Ms. Swain. Um good afternoon, Mayor and Council. It's nice to see everyone in a in a virtual environment at least. Um Planning Services is before you this afternoon to to present first reading and to set a public hearing date. Regarding proposed bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero seven and the section thirty four fifty two twenty six west of the fourth conceptual scheme. Upon adoption of the bylaw and the approval of the conceptual scheme, the landowners may commence the planned land development activities. Section thirty four fifty two twenty six west of the fourth is located in the southeast quadrant of the highway sixteen A and highway sixty. Within zone six of the Atchison Industrial Park. Bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero seven proposes to amend Parkland County's land use bylaw number uh twenty seventeen dash eighteen. By redistricting three parcels of land within section thirty four fifty two twenty six west of the fourth. From the industrial reserve district to the business industrial and the highway commercial industrial corridor land use district. This will allow landowners to proceed with subdivision and other development activities. In accordance with the policies of the county's MDP, the Atchison Industrial ASP, and the new conceptual scheme. It is noted that this redistricting is in compliance with the Atchison Industrial Area Area Structure Plan. Which identifies these lands as available for development. The Atchison Industrial Park is identified within. Identified as a major employment area within the Edmonton Metropolitan Region Growth Plan. This redistricting is supported by a new conceptual scheme and which is included in the agenda package. Administration has worked closely with the two landowners and their consulting team. In developing this conceptual scheme to meet the needs of the proposed development. Consistent with the requirements set out in the county's MDP and the Atchison Industrial ASP. The plan is fully supported by administration with no recommendations for revisions. This conceptual scheme will be brought forward for council resolution following closure of the public hearing and any further public input. In conclusion, administration is requesting that council provide first reading to propose bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero seven. And to set a public hearing date of April twenty seventh twenty twenty one at nine thirty AM either in council chambers or virtually. To receive additional public input on proposed bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero seven. And the section thirty four fifty two west of the fourth conceptual scheme. That concludes my presentation and administration be happy to respond to any questions of council. And Mr. Fedver Kudroniky is available uh on the line as well.
Thank you, Ms. Oxley, for that uh presentation and the overview. Can I get a mover for the first motion on this uh agenda item?
Uh Mr. Chair, uh Councilor Kabasi, Division Three, I move that bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero seven receive first reading.
Thank you, and open it up for comments or questions. I don't see any coming from members of council. Uh one question for administration, so there are. Uh some constraints at this moment. Uh their part does identify six active oil and gas wells. Um a couple of wellheads. There are some abandoned or suspended pipelines. Um one active oil battery facility. And it also um speaks to reclamation and that one of the pipelines um currently in. In the within those lands will not be removed. I guess the question I have, is there any risk to Parkland County associated uh with that one pipeline that will not be reclaimed? And as far as the planning process and the conceptual scheme, um I'm assuming that. All the internal roads kind of work around and recognize that one pipeline that uh will be left. So I guess the one question I do have is, is there any potential uh exposure to Parkland County um from that one pipeline that will remain?
Uh through your mayor, uh Mr. Fed Fedrenicki might have a little something to add to this one. Um but the purpose of the planning is is to address these items and to avoid them, so. Um just by the creation of the plan, um that would address those issues. Um I don't know if Mr. Fedrenicki has any further comments on on uh the risk side.
Uh no, thank you, uh Mr. Mayor and to the rest of council. Uh again, there is uh no risk to Parkland County at this time by approving the conceptual scheme. Again, when the actual development comes forward at the subdivision design stage. Again, they will, the applicants will have to prove that they are following the provincially regulated setbacks uh from the pipelines. Uh or again, that they have been properly removed and reclaimed uh for that. So again, our Parkland County subdivision authority would be doing a final review. On that matter to to confirm that uh they've been appropriately addressed. Uh and again, just for council's reference, again, there are a number of existing oil and uh gas pipelines within the Atchison Industrial Park uh within our developed areas already. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fedrenicki, for that. Uh any additional comments or questions from members of council? See none, uh please raise your hand if you're in support of the motion. And all six members of council are supportive of that. Can I get a mover for the second motion, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Hollins, Division Four, I moved that a public hearing be scheduled for April twenty seventh twenty twenty one. At nine thirty AM in council chambers to hear public comment on bylaw twenty twenty one dash zero seven.
Thank you, Councilor Hollins. Uh please raise your hand if you're in favor of that motion. And again, all members of council are in support of proceeding with the. Public hearing at the scheduled date and time as uh highlighted. Thank you to staff for the overview on that item. Uh we'll move to item eight point three committee reports, and I will start with Councilor Kabasi.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a brief comment. Uh the uh Rural Municipal Association held their conference uh last week and uh. Went through a limited number of resolutions this year along with keynote speakers and uh. Just want to compliment Vice Chair Kara Westerland. She always does a good job uh stick handling those resolutions and uh. It was minimal business uh in a different kind of a capacity, but uh well done to staff who organized the event and uh. Um brought rural municipalities across the province together. Thank you.
Council of Asia, Council Hollins.
Uh not to add to Council of Asia, but uh Alberta Capital Region Waste Water Commission, I uh. I distributed the meeting minutes. Uh the last meeting was just basically the audit, so we uh fulfilled a clean audit. That's all.
Council McNabb.
I thank you very much. Um so I distributed to council um the Pioneer, Sonicane Pioneer. Parkland Pioneer Museum um executive report. Um gives a pretty good outline of where where we're going with that. And um just keeping council informed of um. The progress there. I also um. I have no other committees to report to. Thank you very much.
Council Melman.
Thank you very much. So um. She augmented uh to Councilor Kabasi had indicated uh in and around RMA. Um the Evergreen Foundation, um there was an announcement made by the province that they will receive their two point five million dollars. For the Victor Lake project. So there is still a process uh that we need to follow as an organization and coming to our council to get approval for that. Um but it just kind of seems like a chicken with the egg. You have to have the memorandum of understanding, what not the agreement before you can get the money from the province, and then they have to go back. And do the rest of the work. Um. A great many of us on council attended the tri-county egg study presentation that was uh delivered on Friday as well. Um I know Council Hollins was there and and uh and such, so um. Then also to Council Kabasi and my staff along with Mr. Fernandez. Have been attending the bilateral knowledge um exchange with Germany on the coal exits and uh structural change. It's proving to be very interesting actually, and once, we still have one more day uh to do tomorrow, so. Once that's complete, I'm sure we'll give a report back on the full piece of it. So um on the outset of it, though, um I would say. Where their main difference is to us is how they started. The project of the decommissioning of coal. I think that's the biggest difference to start with, so. But uh I'm sure uh Council Kabasi, if my staff and Mr. Fernandez will report back to council. Thank you.
Thank you. I have uh no committee reports for today, so if I can get a mover to receive the reports as information, please.
Mr. Mayor, Councilor John McNabb, Division Five, I'll make the motion that. The you first to receive for information and as presented. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, does Councilor Jensen have a comment?
My apologies, Councilor Jensen. Um. Any committee.
Okay, I'm struggling. Thank you, Council Kabasi. I'm struggling with my unmuted button there. Um the next council meeting, I'll bring, I've been quite active with FCM. I'll bring forward a report at the next meeting. Other than that, nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you. And again, my apologies for my oversight. Um. The, please raise your hand if you're in favor of accepting the reports as information. And that is carried unanimously. Uh Ms. Wayne will move to. Item nine on the agenda, which is a closed session. I'll turn that over for an introductory remarks for you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion before you was that council convene in closed session pursuant to section one ninety seven of the municipal government act. To meet in private to discuss matters protected from disclosure by section twenty three of the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wayne. Can I get a mover for the proposed motion?
Sure, Councilor Melon, Division Six, I'll make the motion as read out by Ms. Swain to go into close.
Thank you, and uh if you're in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. And all six members are supportive of that, so we will be going into a closed session.
Thank you.
Yes Rod, are you there? I can't believe this. Did you guys hear me at all?
Yeah, we can.
Okay, sorry, I tapped that shot for my Internet never goes down like this, but Shaw's confirm we're down. So I will make that motion if it's not too late. I lost track of you guys there for a sec.
Hi, it's Barb. We're just getting ready to come back. Just one moment if we can just put our systems on mute please. Thank you. Okay, you may now proceed.
Can I get a mover from a member of council to revert back into open session please?
Minister Mayor's Counsel, Amy Tojensen, Division 1, I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Please raise your hand if you're in favor. And that is carried. Thank you. And we do have motions for counsel's consideration. If we can get those put forward and then I'll take movers for those motions. And ask they be read into the record please. Can I get a mover for the first motion?
Mr. Chair, Council Division 3, I'll move that council accept the comparative market analysis and listing highlight sheet for information as presented. And I guess secondly, that council authorize administration to proceed with the sale of the subject parcel based on the current market value as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Kavasik. So that has to do with the tax forfeiture property number one. So I'll So I'll ask the question for the first motion to accept the comparative market analysis. And ask members of council to raise their hand if they are in favor of that motion, please. And that is carried. And Councilor Kabastic has put the second motion forward as well. Once again, I'd ask members of council, if you're in favor for administration to proceed with the sale, please raise your hand. And that is carried. Thank you. And if we can get the next motion on the screen, please. Thank you. And if I can get a mover for these two motions, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Hollins, Division 4. I move the council accept the comparative marketed analysis on listing highlight sheet for information as presented. And I also move that council authorize administration to proceed with the sale of the subject parcel based on the current market value as presented.
Thank you. And this is for property number two, as discussed in our closed session. I'd ask members of council to please raise your hand if you're in favor of that first motion. And that is carried. And we do have the second motion on the floor as well. And once again, please raise your hand if you were in favor of that motion. And that is carried unanimously. Thank you. And we have one final motion for council's consideration. And if we can get that on the screen, please. Thank you. So the motion is on the screen, if I can get a mover.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilor John McNabb, Division 5. And for the motion, proposed motion that council approved to sign the memorandum of understanding in support of the collaborative economic development initiative.
Thank you. I'd ask members of council who are in favor of this motion to please raise your hand. One second. Okay, thank you. And if I can get those opposed to raise your hand. So we'll let the records reflect that five members of council did support the motion, one did not. With that, that brings us to conclusion of today's agenda. And we'll adjourn the meeting at 3:50 PM. Thank you. And I want to thank administration. This is the first time that we utilized a video platform to conduct our council meeting. And I just want to express my appreciation on behalf of all council. I think it went very smoothly. So thanks for your work on making this possible.